Good afternoon, everyone. Today is Tuesday, April 26, 2022, and this is a meeting of the Akusha Vote of Selectmen. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for our own. Thank you very much. And gentlemen, do I have a motion to open the meeting?
So move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Well, today we're going to move right ahead to new business. First on the new business, we have the annual town election warrant approval. If you have matters presented, votes may be taken. Mr. Kelly, we have a document that we need to sign concerning the...
That's coming with the town clerk.
She should be here any time.
Okay, very good. Do we need her to talk about anything concerning that warrant, or is it just to tell us that...
It's the warrant and to sign it in front of her.
Okay.
I've got a couple things while we wait for her, Mr. Chairman, if you want.
Sure, that'd be fine.
As you know, I don't have a written report because I was out for a couple per day taking vacation, and you had a meeting at the end of last week. But I've met with the town planner, the building inspector, the DPW crew, and the town clerk on a number of the articles from the past that have money in it. We are going to use some of those to fund this snow and ice deficit. Some of them go back to 2004. Additionally, when meeting with the building inspector, we discussed the parting ways building and the fact that there's going to be work done for the next three months using those articles to finish the repairs. I'm going to be meeting with Chad from the parks on some of his articles to make a contingency plan if the CPC doesn't meet, so that when we go forward, we take care of that. On the May 11 meeting, we're going to bring new staff in for introductions for the Board of Selectmen office. The financial, you're going to sign the ban renewal after it goes through the sale. And I would ask that the fire chief negotiations be on in executive sessions so we can know where we're going with that. On the 25th, the town planner is going to brief you on all of the projects that are ongoing, so you actually know what's going on over there. I would like to talk about the Nye Avenue project and the articles, especially since the engineering's expected in by that date. And we should, for example, go forward with planning the fall town meeting because when I talked to the financial folks concerning the bonds, there's a number of articles that have to be put forward to remove bond authorization for projects that are finished. And if you don't remove it, it affects your bond rating. We don't have to worry about that for the ban renewal. But today, I received a call from DEP, and they are concerned about a request for funding for sewer projects that was made a year and a half ago, and we have to come forward with articles concerning that. It was supposed to be done now. It's been put off. We got lucky in that the person who is now the engineer at DEP used to work for me in Milbury. I didn't know that, and they'll extend beyond October concerning the application for the grants and the funding.
Mr. Kelly, when you talked about the extra money from articles in the past, it comes to mind, not to get off topic here a little bit, but the big item pickup. I know we had a certain amount of money allotted in that, and, you know, gentlemen...
You have two articles with $20,409. Those articles, I've talked to the DPW director. They say that the soonest it could be put together and scheduled is late summer, early fall. There is a need for additional funding. We'll meet with CMAS and see what additional funding is needed if we need to go to the reserve account.
Okay, because CMAS kind of controls, dictates the schedule.
And how much we have to pay.
And how much we have to pay, plus then the scheduling with the DPW to arrange it to have it on Saturdays, that sort of thing. Very good.
Mr. Chairman, I would, look, I appreciate you bringing this up. It's an issue that has gone by the wayside. Spring has sprung. You know, this is the time of year where people starting to clean, and I realize it may not get executed until, you know, late spring or the summer or fall. But I think this board should take a vote to endorse it and make sure that it's on the radar of the DPW and this board, so it does, you know, one year doesn't turn to an X. So I'd like to make a motion that we do, can't call it spring pickup, but fall, you know, bulky item pickup between now and the fall, and make it a top priority of this board.
Do I have a second on that motion?
I concur with Mr. Wonah on something that townspeople voted for on a couple of different occasions. I had a conversation with Mr. Kelly today over this exact subject matter, and I said it's something that we absolutely have to do because that was something that we pledged to the residents at past town meetings, and that 20 grand, I think, is two different articles, the combination of two different articles. It's really like a cap is like 20, but the two sums of the two articles. As Mr. Kelly noted, if this, if we need a little extra money, we always can refer back to the reserve fund or a transfer from reserve fund, but it's absolutely something that we should be doing.
And as you know, we've tried to schedule this twice now in the last three years. We're going to shut down...
COVID.
COVID. And then last year, CMAS pulled the plug pretty much a few months or a few weeks before we were ready to do it. So I do have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, very good.
Mr. Chairman, thank you for bringing that to our attention once again. Also, one other issue, you know, we get the street sweepers out sometime soon. Again, we've got a lot going on, but this is the time of year.
Yep. Keepers on, we only go one street?
Yep. Absolutely. Right, we had it fixed last year, right? We bought the pots.
Yeah, well, we bought pots. They've been working on it for a month.
Right, right, because I've heard some comments from Slocum Street, too, that that street needs to pass over, so, very good. Okay.
And additionally, as I said, I met with the DPW director. I also talked with Selectmen Gaspar about some of the potential opera projects, talking to my friend at DEP. We're going to have to make sure we get the engineering going on this or get the report, especially from what I learned this afternoon from this person at DEP in that the town has put in applications to DEP that I found no records of, so they're going to send them to me. But the applications go back to early 2021.
Yeah, I'd like to see that myself.
Very good. If I look up, I see Pam Lavani, Ms. Lavani?
Oh, geez.
You were pressed on the new business?
I was.
So you have the town election warrant that needs to be signed by the board?
Yes. Hello.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Yes, we have, Lisa does have the warrants, and there are just a couple of things that I do want to mention. One of them being that we have a number of vacancies, which is very disappointing, but I just want to let everyone know that we do still have vacancies for the upcoming annual town election, which is going to be Saturday, May 14. And the actual hours to that are 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., not 8:00 p.m. Okay? That was an error in the important dates at a glance calendar, okay? But it will only be till 6:00 p.m., and that will be at the elementary school, okay, as normal. There will be a couple of changes before I get into the eight vacancies, a few changes due to the census. We will have people at the entry entering, telling people where, what their new precincts are, but they will also be receiving a postcard in the mail, and those precinct changes will be due to the 2020 federal census.
Okay.
Okay. Getting back to the ballot, we have, for moderator, we do have a vacancy. And I do mention, if anyone is interested in running as a write-in campaign, write-in candidate, to please contact me directly so that I can explain the proper way of being put on a ballot as a write-in candidate, okay? We do have, for selectmen, Dave DeRoche, Robert Hinkley. For assessor, we have Laverio de Silva Soares. Board of Health, Tom Fortin, and also Douglas Thomas. School committee, Jennifer Downing and Sarah Gomes. Commissioner of trust funds, again, we do have a vacancy. Planning commission, again, we have a vacancy. We also have a planning commissioner position that is only for the remaining term until May 17, 2025, due to the unfortunate passing of Philip Mello, who passed away in August. We also have, for the cemetery board, Shaleen Gordon. Trustees of the Free Public Library, we have two vacancies for that. And park commissioner, again, another vacancy. And for housing authority, we have Stephanie Von Jeffs, okay? All of those are three-year terms unless, unless I mentioned, actually, housing authority is five years and planning is also five years.
So you said there's a vacancy on the planning board?
There is.
Didn't we, we appointed gentleman Marc Francois?
We did, but unfortunately, the other candidate that had taken out papers did not have enough signatures, so it was not considered valid. We were unable to certify his papers.
Okay.
Okay.
Did gentleman, Mr. Francois, did he take out papers and is he on...
Oh, I'm sorry, did I not say, I didn't say him? I'm sorry. I don't have my glasses on.
You said there's a vacancy, so we're a little twisted on that.
There is a, there, I'm sorry, there's two positions available. One is the five-year position. The second is until May 17 of 2025. That's fulfilling Phil Mello's position.
But Mr. Francois pulled papers, and he's certified?
He is certified for the Phil Mello's position, yes, yeah.
And just one quick question for the people out there and for myself, the process of getting an absentee ballot?
Absentee ballots should be available in our office beginning next Monday. I do ask that people do call ahead. Applications can be found on the town clerk's website, or they can stop in at the office and we can have them fill one out right there.
Okay.
Okay.
And if they came in person and they filled one out, then they can vote right away, or they can...
If we have the ballots, yes, absolutely.
Very good.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you. So I believe you have something for us to sign to make it all official?
Yes, Lisa actually has those all for me.
Do you want to take the three, three sets while you sign?
Yeah, we just have them right.
I think there's about 13 of them that need to be signed.
Is there any other document?
This is, I brought coffee. This is the...
They want to sign all these?
This is the coffee.
We should take a recess.
Yeah, we might, can I make a motion to take a two-minute recess, to sign these?
So move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Just pass it down. Okay, gentlemen, do I have a motion to reconvene Board of Selectmen?
So move.
Second. Folks, I do. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, number 200. We have Mass DOT South Main Street project.
This is just a notification, Mr. Chairman, that what you were told previously, that the project review committee has approved, but this is not a commitment to the TIP project on South Main Street.
TIP meaning?
Transportation Improvement Project.
Okay, so this is an overview. I've read it. It says they're going to start negotiating with or talking to us as far as the design concept?
And they're going to start the design concept. It's going to be multiple years.
So Chairman, the board asked me to, you know, run point on this project, so I just want to clarify for people what this letter is, what it isn't, and what it could be, okay? So, as you know, South Main Street is a state-owned highway. With that, the town has little control over what goes on on that road from a design standpoint, from a safety standpoint, and the town took a run at this some 20 years ago, and it was denied at town meeting. So what this does is this is bringing this project back for consideration. As you know, we've got a, the board has talked about, a very aspirational look at what the South Main Street neighborhood could look like along with Slocum Street. I think this is an opportunity to tie all of this in, but what this would require is a town meeting vote, and this board will not put forward any project for consideration unless it's a good deal for the town, right? But what it could be, maybe this is just one person's opinion, if you think you like ornamental lampposts, if you think you like brick sidewalks, wider sidewalks, less truck traffic on South Main Street, greater control over traffic and what goes on over there, that's what this project could be. That's my vision. I hope that's the board's vision, and that's what we would put forward if we were able to come to those terms. So for anybody, you know, to take a position either way at this point, I think is premature. It's a long process. We're in the first inning of a very long game here, but that said, we're in a better position than we were because these projects don't even get in the consideration bin, in the fact that we're already in consideration and have something to possibly consider, I think is really, is really good. I know, you know, Mr. Gaspar and Mr. DeRoche have talked about Slocum Street. We can tie all of these in together. You'll have a nice walking corridor from town hall here down to the Faven Town Line, take advantage of our trails and our walking system. That's our vision. That's what we want to see happen, but it won't happen unless there's a town meeting vote and we feel it's a good, good deal for the town.
Very good. Any comments for Mr. Gaspar?
No, I agree. You know, I'm happy that we're at where we're at. I'm just, you know, the one, the one vision that I do have for South Main Street in some of the past dialogue that we've had is infrastructure, right? We need a new water main going down South Main Street. We'll, we'll discuss with the state, part of the deal, hopefully, part of the deal and the negotiations will be a sewer pipe also run down South Main Street if they're going to do the road, pigtail all the side streets that aren't sewed right now on the south side of, after Century House, basically is where sewer stops, Pagut Street in Pembroke. So we can stub that and sit the dummy pipe in the road and tee off all the side streets. It would benefit all those users down there when sewer expansion would go that way, would reduce the cost for those. So anything that would benefit the town is what I'm after, especially the infrastructure. We know there's an old water pipe down that. Mr. Menadz here, I know that he was, him and I talked about, you know, maybe upsizing that water main to get better flow down at the South Main Street side, those neighborhoods over there. Just Mr. Wonah touched on sidewalks, the curb heights that are ridiculous right now because they've just been all the way in that road, over there in that road. We have two-inch sidewalks. It's not acceptable. They should be six-inch sidewalks. And then, of course, the big deal is if we are going to take over that road, the amount of asphalt that's going to be built to a still, to a state highway spec because of the truck traffic that is on there, it is inevitable, inevitable that that truck traffic will continue. To what degree it will continue, who knows, but trucks are allowed to use our roads. They pay excise tax as well. So I would just ask that that mix on South Main Street remain the same as a state highway and not to a regular road spec, where it'll start collapsing over a very short period of time, and then we, the taxpayers, are on the hook for that mile stretch of plus of road, five or 10 years down the road. So those are just some of the little things that we're looking, I'm looking for. And I think Mr. Wonah hit all the other points of, you know, the more decorative part of it and the controls that we could have over the, over the road right now. We don't have that control. I put up speed limit signs over here, and I had Mass DOT sitting here with like nine people scouting me down and chopping my head off, saying, you got to take those signs down. And we were trying to do it for the residents over here on South Main Street, and we had to take those signs down. So as, again, as Mr. Wonah alluded to, we don't have much control over what happens on that road, and that, you know, could be a benefit for the, for the people of the community other than beautifying it as well, so.
Absolutely. You know, just to comment for a little further, things seem to be falling into place at this time, you know? We have a representative who will be taking over, assuming he gets reelected, who's transportation, on the transportation board for the state. We have opera money coming into our, into our town for, we hope to use some of it for infrastructure. We also have the bipartisan infrastructure bill that's being passed in Washington or hopefully will be passed, which will give us some more money and some more options for the Slocum Street, South Main Street area. So, you know, I'm very optimistic about this all happening, and I'm happy to be part of it. All right?
Thank you.
Very good. Number three on the new business, we have a Mass DEP letter to the Akusha Water Department for outstanding performance for the 2022 Public Water System Award. I can just briefly touch on this, Mr. Menad. It says, Dear Mr. Menad, the Mass Department of Environmental Protection Drinking Water Program is pleased to extend its congratulations to the Akusha Water Department for its outstanding performance in 2021. Your system has achieved one of the top scores in the consecutive system category of the 2022 Public Water System Awards program. Mass DEP realizes that it is no easy task to keep up with the ever-evolving federal and state drinking water regulations. Your compliance efforts have not gone unnoticed, as have your efforts to go above and beyond compliance. The in-person award ceremony will take place on May 10, 2022, at 10:30 a.m. at the Devon's Common Center in Devon, Mass. The award ceremony invites you to attend to receive your award certificate. There will be speakers from the US EPA, Mass DEP, and an EJ keynote speaker at the award ceremony, with late lunch tomorrow. So Mass DEP encourages you to continue this level of excellence in carrying out your work of protecting and supplying safe and fit water to our citizens. And congratulations, Yvette DePisa, Director.
It's a team effort, team effort, so, you know, including Kathy, she does a lot of the big work for DEP and Ann and the whole group.
Yep.
Maintenance and, you know, the flushing.
Okay, then, yeah. Make it official.
All right. Well, just like I said, it's a group effort. It's, you know, it's, it's the whole group. You know, we get the guys, you know, flushing hydrants, you know, doing the cleaning of gate boxes and all that, you know, exercising valves, and it's a lot to it, not just the water testing, you know, and, you know, Kathy and Ann and doing the paperwork and making sure that gets over to DEP as well. So it's a group effort, just, it's not just me, just want to say, it's a team effort over there in the water pot.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Thanks to the whole crew.
Yeah, you want to say?
Okay.
You wanted to go and talk about?
Well, it's the sign update, right?
Yeah, I didn't think it was going to be Dan or the chief, so Dan.
All right, safety signs, right? Next, on the new business.
Dan, Dan, you shouldn't have sat down.
On the new business, Dan, on the number four, we have a briefing on safety signs.
Okay.
That we've established.
The safety signs, which ones we talking about?
Well, we got, we got Main Street, right?
Yep. Which I believe they're all, I'm not sure if all of them got up yet. I think we were waiting for a few more signs to be put up on, on Main Street. I think you have the main ones, which is on Wing Road and close to the, the New England Farms, we're going to be putting up that. Them are up, and I think they put the two speed limit signs up.
That's correct.
Again, we're working with the chief on that one, so we got to kind of, I don't know if they're totally operational, they had a little hard time, and then things are going to be set for the radar and stuff, so I think we got a little more work to do, but at least they're up there. I think within, maybe this week, right, might have that done, or?
I'm sorry?
Maybe this week will happen.
I wouldn't say absolutely. I mean, you, your chief has done 90%, of the work that needs to be done, it just, it just needs to be tweaked.
Yeah, so it should be, it should be good.
Yep, well, I received a couple calls from the citizens who signed that petition, and very thankful that the signs are up.
Yeah, just even, I think even them there, being there, right, they kind of determine people a little bit already.
I think just the fact that they're there, I mean, I've gone through a few times, it looks to be that the radar may need to be adjusted as far as the angle of catching the cars, but I can tell you, this morning, on my way in, I went down, there was a car in front of me that was probably going about, you know, 30, 33, and it went from 33 to like 10 in probably two seconds once the, the display. I say that only because I, luckily, I was doing the speed limit and I was able to. But when they're functional, the flash of the speed, it also gives you a red light, flashing light on the sign itself, which tends to catch people's attention, you know, when we're not able to have cruises over there. I think that will help to some degree. And the safety signs on Main Street and that, those are no parking signs, correct?
Correct.
They were installing from New England Farms down to Hamlin Street or...
That's what I'm saying, I'm not sure if he got them all in. I know they were working on them, but I think he had a few left, or either we're waiting for some, or he had a few more left to do, but yeah.
And this will help curb once New England Farms opens up?
Correct.
The traffic flow on Main Street and Wing Road.
And, well, I'll get you on that one. They supposed to be putting them sidewalks, pouring them sidewalks far as on Friday, so they're going to actually pour the two pieces so we can come down from one side of Main Street and the other side of Wing. They're actually going to do the concrete work far as the drop-offs there, and they'll be doing the crosswalks as well, so.
Oh, very good.
But they're going to pour them this Friday. They told me it would be done Friday.
Excellent. Very good.
Thanks, Dan.
Okay, thank you, Dan. Next on the new business, number five, police department certification accomplishment. We have members of the force here tonight. Chief, if you'd like to come up to the...
Yes, thank you. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, how are you today?
Good, thank you, very good. It's nice to come before you with positive news and, you know, not struggles of staffing or budgets and things of that nature. But just going to speak, give you a quick background of the program, should take me a minute or two, recognize some of the officers that are here and some of the officers that, you know, weren't able to make the appearance tonight. The certification process is actually a culmination of what chief, former chief Mike Al started probably about 14 years ago. I was working on, as a sergeant, I was working on that with him at the time, and we quickly realized a big obstacle was the facility that we were in at the time. So after a little while of working on policies and gathering things and getting, getting done as much as we could get done, we realized that it was going to be counterproductive and a waste of money to spend the money that would be needed on that building to retrofit to meet the standards of a modern police station. So the focus then began, you know, with, you know, a couple members of the board here, focused on, on the construction of a new station that we're at now, you know, we've been there for about six years. So when I, when I took over as chief, one of the first things I, I looked at was, was the completing the certification process. And basically, there's a state agency that's been around about 25 years, the Mass Police Accreditation Commission, and basically what they do is they oversee the state certification and accreditation process. Two major components, one is the establishment of professional standards for police agencies to meet. by outside agency or, or assessors, if you will, uh, to see how we, we measure up against those standards. So we're not just producing standards for standard sake, uh, that we're putting them out there and somebody's coming in to see that we have them, number one, and number two, that we're doing what we say we're supposed to be doing. Um, the standards generally dictate, um, or address specific topics. Some of those topics, uh, include, uh, agency authority, use of force, recruitment selection, promotion of personnel, training, discipline, internal affairs, patrol operations, traffic operations, criminal investigations, emergency response planning, prisoner transportation and holding facilities, records, communications, collection and preservation of evidence, property and evidence control. Um, the vast majority of the standards that the commission puts out that we're required to meet for, for certification and accreditation are policy-driven, but there's a certain percentage of them that are based on the, uh, the agency's layout, um, and, and equipment that we have. While, again, flashing back twelve years, well, we certainly have been able to get all the policy and we did have, uh, a lot of our policies up to snuff, the building was a major stumbling block, which is why we put it on the back burner until such time the, the building was, was constructed, so. Um, the process really began, uh, about two and a half years ago where I asked, um, you know, I looked for volunteers, so to speak, uh, and, and one of the people that, that, uh, stepped up was Officer Jason White, um, to be our point person, you know, on, on the accreditation process. Uh, obviously, as chief of police, you know, it's my job to, to evaluate and issue policy, but there's a, there's a fine minutia to it. We implemented, we got away from three ring binders with paper, we implemented a new software system for better accountability and better access to policies. Uh, what we found when we were in that self-assessment phase is that we were doing, by and large, we were doing a lot of things right and doing it the right way, but we just couldn't necessarily find what was written down, um, and we were relying on a lot of institutional knowledge, um, which as the years has gone away, institutional knowledge with veteran officers. Um, you know, as I said before, we have a relatively young department and, you know, things may not happen every day, every week, maybe a once a year thing, once every couple of years. And what we found ourselves doing is going to the person that, hey, this person handled this, how did we handle it? Uh, so we realized that's not, that's not the way to do business, so. Uh, Jason was the point person collecting all those, you know, uh, word, some, some word of mouth policies and, and old written policies that were these three ring binders and converting that, updating them to, to meet the best practices, meet current standards, uh, you know, of modern policing and also getting those into a, um, a manageable form, online software that's easily searchable, you know, whether it be from any workstation smartphone or anything like that. So if a question comes up, everything's right there, if we're looking for a form, it's right there. Uh, our training records, uh, are recorded there, so it's kind of one-stop shopping, makes things a lot easier, getting rid of the paper and it just streamlined the process, bring us into, you know, the twenty-first century, uh, really. Uh, so the process, um, most departments, when they go for initial certification, they have somebody that's working on, at least one person that's working on it on a full-time basis for anywhere from a year to a year and a half. Unfortunately, we didn't have that luxury, um, staff-wise, so what we did is we worked with Jason and he dedicated, you know, one day a week, you know, that was, uh, specific to, to certification and accreditation, where he could focus on that. Uh, so what takes, took somebody a year and a, year, year and a half full-time, Jay was able to do, you know, in, in about two years, uh, on a part-time basis. And it's really a testament to him and, and coming up with a plan and focus on everything. While the department as a whole should be committed because we, myself and Jason, we reached out to, I guess what you would call subject matter experts within the department to review these policies as we were updating them and, and kind of looking at, um, what other departments do and what the state standards are and to make sure that not only the policies we're putting out met the standard, but they also met what we need to do within our department, that was specific to our department, that we weren't using terminology or, or talking about processes that didn't apply to us. So we want to make sure that we're customizing the policies. So, um, as he went through that process, uh, we get to, uh, August of last year, August of twenty twenty-one, and we, we called for what's called a market assessment where we get, um, assessors in from other departments, um, to kind of come in informally, tell us where we stand and give us the areas, you know, where we need to focus to improve. Uh, we did that, we had, um, a sergeant from, Sergeant Scott Rose from Freetown came in, who was the accreditation in Freetown for a long time, Sergeant Phil Adams, formerly an officer here in Acushnet, came in, Lieutenant Kevin Cobza, uh, while he wasn't there for our assessment, uh, Kevin Cobza from Behaving was very instrumental in giving us, uh, kind of pointing us where we need to do, what we needed to improve those, uh, those deficient policies, if you will. Once that was done, Jay took all their criticism, we corrected what we needed to correct too, he then called for the formal, um, assessment, which was done in November of, of twenty twenty-one. That involved, uh, three assessors and, uh, from, again, from other departments and from the Mass, uh, Accreditation Commission came in and it basically, um, you know, they, they crawled, crawled through our, our files, uh, you know, for, for the better part of two days. You know, to, not only do we have a file and, and have a policy that addressed the issue, but we also had, uh, supporting documentation that we were actually following that policy. For instance, uh, you know, uh, evidence and property management, the property room, we have a policy in place that, you know, says, hey, you have to do this type of inspection twice a year, this type of inspection once a year. They wanted to see evidence in that, in that file that we had done those, those inspections and, uh, they were really looking for that, that proof, so to speak, uh, of each of the standards. Uh, certification is a hundred fifty-nine mandatory standards, which affected a number of policies in the building. They did their agency tour, uh, the time they left, we were in good shape, there were a couple little fixes that had to be done, which is basically just providing additional documentation that maybe we have, but we didn't have it readily available for them that day. Um, the Accreditation Commission meets intermittently during the course of the year there, after our November assessment, they did not meet again until, uh, February. Um, they voted in February after reviewing all the files and the, the assessment of the assessors, um, if I can say that, uh, and they voted to, uh, to certify us, to give us full certification. Um, put it in perspective, it's, it's, and I, I say this, it's kind of a big deal, there's, there's three hundred fifty-one cities and towns in the state and an additional fifty or so law enforcement agencies and there's about a hundred and twenty-five that are certified and accredited, so I think we put ourselves in the, in the top twenty-five percent, uh, just that certification. So, um, a part of the program, we're getting, we're continuing on toward accreditation, there's an additional, uh, ninety-eight, an additional hundred and sixty-seven to some additional, additional standards, about the same amount, a hundred and fifty-nine that we have to meet, some of which we've already met, uh, some of which we're working on. Um, and the goal is to get that done within a year of that initial certification. If we can just meet those additional standards between now and February of next year, we will become accredited and then the process doesn't end there, it's not, you know, it's not a race to the finish line, it's an ongoing process where we have to continually, you know, reassess our policies, show that we're reviewing, show that we're looking at best practices and we are subject to recertification, re-accreditation, uh, inspections every two to three years, um, depending on, on what level we're at. So the, the intention is to keep, keep pushing through to get to accreditation, you know, to put us in that top, you know, twenty percent, you know, of, of the departments in the, in the state that are at that. And the benefits, you know, the benefits are, are, there's a lot of benefits, I mean, the, the most, the most tangible benefit and it's relatively small when you think about it is, we're entitled to a six hundred and twenty-five dollar credit per year from Maya the Town to Chara, uh, but a bigger picture is it helps reduce, uh, liability and helps us manage our risk better by, by identifying areas, um, that potentially, you know, could, could prove costly to the town in the way of liability and risk, so. The, the bigger, less tangible, you know, uh, is, is reducing the liability and it also makes for, for a more professional police department, we're able to, you know, document what we do, we're able to show what we're doing based on sound policy and it's not just, you know, I'm sitting in, you know, I'm sitting at my, uh, my, my couch on a Saturday morning, saying, hey, this would be a good idea to do this this way. We're basing it on, you know, state policy, other accredited policies, uh, the International Association Chiefs of Police, we're, we're adopting all that down, down to here and with everything with police reform, and I'll, I'll, I'll finish this off with police reform, this is the smartest thing that the, the town can be doing to make sure that we're staying in compliance with, with a lot of the regulations that are, have been promulgated and, and still to come as a result of that, that police reform legislation. Uh, but that being said, we have the plaque here, um, I've been remiss, but I recognize Detective Sergeant Jeremy Fonsit's here, Detective Ryan Hemphill, um, that were also instrumental. I mean, I could go through every member of the department, um, that everybody, you know, contributed in one way or the other, one way or another, whether it actually be, you know, doing the inspections or offering, you know, proofreading policies, whether, even just the typos, you know, to make sure things made sense, so it's, you know, these are just the members of the department that could make it today, everybody was invited, but, you know, everybody has, you know, somebody has to work and, you know, people have things going on, so it's really a testament to the entire department, but I'll just read real quick, it says Massachusetts Police Accreditation Commission, be it hereby known that the Acushnet Police Department having, taking extraordinary steps to demonstrate its pride and professionalism by living up to a body of critical law enforcement standards in the areas of management, operations, technical support activities to deliver quality police services to its community, is hereby recognized, uh, as a certified police agency for a period of three years. Upon the recommendation of the Mass Police Accreditation Commission and awarded this certificate of certification on the twenty-eighth day of February twenty twenty-two, so this, you know, as much as I'd like to give this to you, we're very proud of this, this is going to go up in our lobby.
Yeah.
I'm not sure where yet, but, uh, it's gonna, it's gonna go, so.
Congratulations.
Very much. Do you guys want to take pictures with them or?
No, sure.
Yep.
Just a, you guys don't come up? Come up. Come up. So if we're going to be doing a lot of pictures, it's baseball season. Don't get it in the bag. It's my macro waist up.
Put the plaque in front of your feet.
You guys get over there, boom.
I won't take.
I'll get on the, I'll be looking.
Sure.
Yeah.
You guys will work, be nice.
All right, yep.
Sure, guys, thank you.
All right, yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Excellent. Congratulations.
My job.
Proud of you guys, yeah.
Thank you.
Great work.
Thank you.
See you around soon.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lisa.
Chief, what role did the facility play in the accreditation process?
It was fairly significant, we, we could have, um, got waivers for some of the standards that applied since the one thirty Main Street, we were up there, but there were some areas we couldn't, and we would have had to spend money and one of the biggest, um, stumbling blocks, thank you, one of the biggest stumbling blocks was the, um, was the lack of a secure holding facility and, and also some of the, uh, security, um, security issues that were at that building. So in order to retrofit, we would have spent hundreds of thousands of dollars, you know, so it, it was very significant.
Back up there.
Yes, Chief.
Oh, okay.
Back to the audience.
Wait, hold on.
Chief, you're gonna tell us, we have two officers leaving the board.
Yes, unfortunately, um, you know, I, I, we've kind of known this was coming for a little while and both of the officers are actually young, young officers and they've been very open, you know, uh, with me and had the conversation about opportunities and they've both been accepted to the, um, the Massachusetts State Police Academy, um, that starts May ninth. We've been having conversations since the fall, state police and the state police, the opportunities that are there are far away and some of the, you know, the opportunities here, like I've said before in a previous meeting, you're never going to be able to fly the helicopter for the Acushnet Police Department, you know, simply not going to happen. You know, so there's opportunities, they're, they're young, they're very proactive officers, um, they got about two and a half years on full-time and, uh, they're, they're going to make excellent state troopers, but unfortunately, the way the state police plays it, you know, they, everything is modified stress, quote unquote, so they, they did not get their letters that they were, um, you know, officially accepted until, uh, fairly recently, so that's why the letters, you know, that I forwarded to, to Mr. Kelly earlier, this, earlier this week, yesterday, you know, I, I've only got the letters now, uh, but I've known, you know, I, I, I fear this, this time and I, I should publicly recognize the officers, both of them, uh, Michael Joy, Officer Michael Joy, Officer Quinn Indio, um, both, both excellent officers, um, I've had the pleasure of, uh, working with both their fathers, um, and Quinn's dad, in fact, we went to school together since we were in kindergarten, so it's, it's bittersweet, you know, I like to, I like them working here, but, you know, if, if somebody has an opportunity to, to go there, it's, like they put it, it's, it's a dream and, and, you know, maybe in five years, if they were still here in five years, they probably wouldn't pursue it, uh, but at this point in their career, they'd be, they, they would always look back at this as an opportunity that was missed, so. That being said, their last days are going to be, uh, early May, uh, so at this point we need to request a, a requisition of a full-time civil service list for, for two people, um, to replace, to replace them.
Make that motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very good, Chief.
It's extremely unfortunate, but.
No, it is, it is, I mean.
Because I happen to know them both personally, um, and their dads, so, um, good people, um, like most of our officers, right, um, but it's just, they're young and you can't prevent them from succeeding in their, in their future, right? And so God bless them both, I wish them both the best of luck, um, they will be missed because they are both outstanding individuals, so, that is what it is. I feel your pain.
So, you know, I let them know, though, you know, no matter what, they'll always have a home here, you know, um, I, you know, it's, it's a, I'm not gonna, I, I can't be better, I can't, they're, they're bettering themselves.
Of course.
If they jump into something else, that's, hey, it's an opportunity that, I'm sure many officers, you know, with a year or two on would, would not turn down, so.
And thank you for their service.
Thank you, yeah, no, like, you know, we're gonna miss them, we're gonna miss them.
Yep. Hey, very good, thank you very much for you.
Okay, thank you, Chief.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Good evening.
That wasn't bad.
Second, uh, next on the new business, we have a reserve fund transfer, training and testing, fifteen thousand dollars. Mr. Kelly?
Mr. Chairman, uh, when I was talking to some of the staff, uh, well, first of all, when I was reviewing my M C P P O and in October I have to take the refresher, by October I have to take the refresher course, uh, and they are looking to see if I have to retake the horizontal construction course, talk to the D P W director, uh, we're not sure that their M C P P O status is still good, that whether they have to take the refresher courses or whether they have to go back and start from scratch. Uh, police chief and fire chief, we've got a new fire chief, they should have it, and the treasurer, collector and accountant who oversee procurements should have it according to best practices. Uh, it'll cost around thirteen, five to fourteen thousand, I've put a little bit in for Acushnet. It will make sure to keep our bond rating where it is, if not improve it, and it will get us a reduction in our insurance costs. And it's something that has to be done for some staff and should be done for the other two. And it is, uh, through the I G's office and it's approximately two thousand dollars a person.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very good. Uh, gentlemen, uh, number nine, outdoor seating application for Rochelle's, I'd like to make a motion, or I'd like to, to table this, uh, item at this time, there needs to be a further discussion between the owner and the, uh, owner of the building and the proprietor of the restaurant.
So I have a motion to table?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Um, number ten, appointment of town administrator James Kelly to Buzzet Bay Action Committee.
Motion to appoint?
Second.[1627.75]
Stand with you, Mr. Kelly. Renewal of borrowing ban for the Kushner school roof.
The ban is a short-term note, Mr. Chairman, and it goes, it matures May 27, 2022, and it needs to be renewed because the project hasn't been completed. It's been reduced somewhat because of the $83,000 received from MSBA, but there's quite a bit more that has to come in from the MSBA. The board has to meet and approve the sale. The sale will take place between now and your next meeting, and by May 11th, the sale will have taken place, and Hilltop Security will, then, when you sign all the formulas, the formal documents, will get the money, put it to pay the old ban, and then we have another year on the new ban.
All right, good.
And hopefully, the project will be done by then.
Yeah. Gentlemen, do I have a motion to, I'm sorry, to renew the borrowing, the ban?
And approve the sale.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very good. Gentlemen, number nine, outdoor seating application for Rochelle's. I'd like to make a motion, or I'd like to table this item at this time. There needs to be a further discussion between the owner and the owner of the building and the proprietor of the restaurant.
Do I have a motion to table? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Number 10, appointment of Town Administrator James Kelly to Buzzet Bay Action Committee.
Motion to appoint. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, Mr. Kelly.
With this, Mr. Chairman, there is a, I'd like to have the board sign a letter that is a support letter in support of the Manitowoc River Valley Water Supply Resiliency Project that is going to go forward to preserve some land in a Kushner. There's a small parcel in a Kushner. There's a lot more in journeying towns, but it is very good for conservation. It's very good for recreation, and it's something I would like the board to just signify their support.
We did something several, a couple of years back on this, down off of Bountiful Road.
Yes.
From the coalition Buzzet Bay to preserve that, so I think it's a... Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. And the Department of Public Works, notice of energy facilities, sitting board Department of Public Utilities. I believe they're installing new transmission lines on existing right-of-ways through town, Eversource's. So they'll be upgrading the Kushner substation also, but this will be limited to the underground conduit and contained within the existing station control building. So, Mr. Kelly, this is a, just an update for...
It's an update, and we will have staff, Kathy Silver will be attending a meeting, and if she needs to brief the board, she'll come and brief the board.
I believe that's a substation off of Wing Lane, and then the connectivity's gonna draw down the property back up Wing Lane, and then shoot across Hathaway Road, and it goes all the way through that property, cuts across the Umla's Curve, and then...
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And then shoots up through, by through Middle Road, connects over the 140 overpass, and then it's going to Fall River.
Okay.
So it's quite a big project. I've spoken with some residents that their properties will be affected by it, but through some deed research, these bits there at Eversource's and, you know, it's part of the scope that they can do what they need to within that 200, I think it's a 200-foot easement, so not much they could do, but I know Eversource has done some work with some of the owners of property to try to satisfy their requests and needs, so.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Kelly?
There is a number of things that seem to be happening with Eversource, and I would ask that you appoint a member of the board to work with me since I'm new, and I'd like to make sure that there is no missteps when we deal with them and when we miss meet with them, and I would request that Mr. Gaspar be appointed.
It's funny, I was gonna volunteer myself for this one, because I've been dealing with a number of resident issues when it comes to the construction and lack of repair work from Riley and Eversource. I just went out on a site visit today with a resident that's dissatisfied, the curb's collapsing after two years of their work. I know we have some work on the south end of town on Laura Keane and Anthony Street. That's a satisfaction of some residents. I've been working with Dan over a policy when they cut a road, how much you were gonna repave, and then also trying to be, get the money from Eversource to put in the piggy bank so we can go and do the whole road instead of just having, you know, a third of the road repaved, and the rest of it looks like crap because they've disrupted the rest of the road, and some of it's buckling, so it's something I'd be more than happy to take on with Mr. Kelly and Mr. Manon, so.
Very good. Motion to appoint Mr. Gaspar.
So moved. Thank you.
I'm second.
Mr. Chairman, just a report. Mr. Hassett has met with the accounting staff, and one of the things he was able to do was concerning what Mr. Gaspar talked about, the money from the utilities for the various road repairs. Well, he was able to show the staff a means that's approved by DOR to segregate the money received, road by road by road, so you can monitor the money and how it is spent and how much is accomplished.
It's important to do that, too, so we don't get lost in space where this money's coming from, so I like that idea a lot, that we know what road that money was allocated to, so we're not using it somewhere else and then forgetting about that road, i.e. the Laura Keane on Anthony Street down there, which they really made a mess of, so.
And that's before he's even on payroll.
Correct, but I think that's important, that we can get our act together with that, and we can allocate those funds and know exactly, to sign a project number to each one of those monies and checks coming in, so we know exactly where that money's gonna go to, and we don't forget about a road that's been done by Eversource or Riley, and figure that out, so.
All very good. Okay, selectmen announcements, gentlemen?
The only thing I have to say is the parade for Little League...
That's correct.
Is this Saturday, I believe, right?
Yeah.
Saturday at 11:00 AM, so we will be closing off the road for, I'd say, you know, somewhere a 30-minute timeframe, so anybody that's gonna be commuting from quarter of 11 till 11:30, possibly reroute down Hamlin Street, or you have to get yourself around some other way, because we will be moving from St. Francis over to Pollock, and it does take about 20 minutes to a half an hour to get everybody out of the road. And the dog food and cat food drive that Miss Becky Tomlinson and Miss Heather Sylvia from Council on Agent came in and discussed with us as well, 5:00 to 7:00 PM, Monday night, May 9th, town meeting night. They'll be doing the dog food, cat food. I think they said something about guinea pigs and the like, so any kind of food, animal food, just please make sure, as she notes inside of her footnotes, to make sure that it's not expired. Please do not bring expired cat food or dog food, but we look forward to that food drive, and I commend Miss Tomlinson and Miss Heather Sylvia, a chew now, I should say, Miss Heather chew now, on their efforts to bring awareness in the hunger of pets and things of the like, so that's it.
And gentlemen, I got a request from the Agricultural Commission to remind people of Kushner, of the beautiful walking paths that we have, whether it be the old sawmill or even down here, Keating Park, behind COA, Keating Woods, and that's just a couple of the many that we have around town. The weather's getting nice. Get out and enjoy the town, see the sights. I also have to say, can't remind everyone enough, candidate's night at Council on Agent, Tuesday, May 3rd at 6:30, and I can come and ask questions to your candidates who are running for Board of Selectmen and Board of Health, so go from there. Future business, next selectmen's meeting is Wednesday, May 11th at 4:00 PM. I believe that's the correct date, correct?
And it's, you know, two executive sessions.
With two executive sessions? Okay.
That's too, too many.
Oh, very good.
One, which I hope you will go back into open session on.
Oh, that's correct.
Oh, yeah.
Forgot about that one, yeah. All right. For all those out there, Mr. Kelly's hinting at we're gonna approve his contract or discuss his contract for approval, so. That seems to be about it. Gentlemen, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.